Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Tuesday, September 3, 2019. I'd like to invite Marius up from Troop 524 Boy Scouts to lead our Pledge of Allegiance this evening. Come on up front and center, Marius. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Marius. He's here for his citizenship in the community badge, I think it is. All right. Well, welcome to the meeting. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Guskowiak.
Here.
Councilmember Kicker.
Here.
Councilmember Demmer.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here. Thank you. Next on our agenda is to adopt this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Geisler. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the agenda is adopted. And our first item on our agenda this evening is, under proclamations and presentations, we have Speaker Hortman, Representative Cagle, Representative Stevenson, and Senator Hoffman. However you're going to come up is fine. I don't... Ooh, they're going to have to follow the speaker.
Senator Hoffman and I joke about age before beauty, but we'll do it the other order tonight. Good evening. I'm State Representative Melissa Hortman, represent a portion of Brooklyn Park and a portion of Coon Rapids, and really pleased to be here tonight and also serve as the Speaker in the Minnesota House. It was a pretty good session in the end. The results were not super dramatic, which I think people find a refreshing change of pace. In recent years, there've been a lot of partisan rancor at the end of session. This year, we were able to preserve health care for 1.2 million Minnesotans by preserving that provider tax. That 1.8 percent when you go to the doctor helps pay for health care for a large number of people, people with disabilities, elderly people, and people throughout the system. That was a good result. The other good result that was kind of a headline story out of this session was decent education funding. We would have liked for the education funding to be a little bit higher on the Democratic House side, but in the end, it was really good education funding for both our colleges and universities and our K-12 system. For Coon Rapids in particular, the local government aid increase is 148,000 for calendar year 2020. And what the effort here was to try to get back to the level that we had in 2002, before that huge budget deficit of $4.5 billion, when there was a very large local government aid cut. And what we know about local government aid is it helps equalize the burden for taxpayers across the state to make sure they all have good city services. So we're pleased to secure the 148,000 in local government aid for the city of Coon Rapids. One of the things we're also pleased to tell you is that the Anoka-Hennepin School District will be getting an additional $5.6 million in the 2020 school year and an additional $11.6 million in the 2021 to help them keep up with inflation. Under the House bill, they would have gotten an additional $3 million in each of those years, but the final deal was a good result for Anoka-Hennepin. They will, though, definitely be coming to the legislature asking for more in hopes of avoiding operating levies. With regard to transportation, it was disappointing that we did not achieve a sustainable increase in transportation resources going on into the future. When Senator Hoffman and I presented to the city of Brooklyn Park last week, one of the big topics on the city of Brooklyn Park's agenda was road repair and how difficult it is to keep up with increasing costs of road repair. The gas tax is pegged at a cent per gallon. It does not automatically adjust with inflation. So because asphalt costs you more this year, but the gas tax doesn't automatically go up and down, you're stuck with getting last year's allocation for this year's asphalt prices. The gas tax proposal that we put forward, the transportation funding package that we put forward, would have resulted in an additional 100... let's see. It would have been 136,000 more in fiscal year 2020 and 628,000 in fiscal year 2021, 764,000 in 2022, and an additional 858,000 in fiscal year '23. And it's important to point out that four-year trajectory because we're still working for this result. It would be a phasen of a five-cent gas tax per year. So a nickel in 2019, a nickel in 2020, a nickel in 2021, and a nickel in 2022, which would bring you the 858,000 additional in revenue every year from 2021 going into the future. We will keep working on that, but that is our update for this year on LGA, transportation, and school funding.
Thank you. Senator Hoffman.
Mayor Cook, thank you. Members of the council, thank you for letting us come back this year. And I do want to spend the next hour talking to you about the things that happened. You know, we realize that this is the first year in the history of Minnesota that you have people 65 and older that outnumber those in the K-12 education system. And with that is a growing increase in need for...yeah, unbelievable, right? There's 865,000 students in K-12, and now we have more people over the age of 65. And that every five years, that's going to just...that bubble's going to keep getting larger and larger, which means there's an impact on our need for good Medicaid services, elderly and people with disabilities. And we know that 75% of all federal dollars that come to the state of Minnesota is geared toward Medicaid. 75% of that goes to elderly and people with disabilities. And so Minnesota's had a history of using that correctly and right. And now you're going to start to see more pressure enhancing the health and human services need versus the education need. And we don't want to pick winners and losers. We want to make sure that we're there. And with that, this year, within education, there was some additional money that went after the cross-subsidy. The cross-subsidy that you hear the districts talk about, specifically you hear in Anoka-Hennepin saying that the cost of providing special education services to those children and youth in need of those services, there was an additional $90 million that was allocated this year to help close the gap of that cross-subsidy. What does that mean for Anoka-Hennepin? Well, we know that Anoka-Hennepin has 5% of the total student population in the state. So you just take a dollar amount that's going to education and just times that by .05 and you get yourself the amount of money that's going to come locally, right? And that's also a good way of just indicating just how we're looking at in the future. So the other thing that happened is there was an equalization factor. There was an additional equalization, which we know, Coon Rapids, Brooklyn Park, Champlin all live in property poor districts where we don't have that same business mix. And so anytime you can get equalization factored into your property taxes, that means there's less property taxes that you're paying and there's actually more money that go into the school districts. Years ago, Jesse Ventura had the fix, but nobody listened to Jesse when he had the fix on that one. And so now we're trying to recoup up that equalization. That was a huge...that was actually one of the first bills I ever did when I was first elected in 2012. We also know that there was a restoration, those folks that were with disabilities, there was a restoration of 7% wage loss, which the restoration was 4.7%. That means those home health aides and those PCA providers for elderly and people with disabilities would get a little bit of help this year. What does that mean for us here locally? You look at the fact that the 65 and older, you have a housing, right? We know we have some programs that Section 42 or Section 8 Housing that are going to help level the playing field for some housing that's affordable for people. And there was a couple of bills that actually added some money to help housing, to help leverage that cost of increased housing demand that's going to be there. And you know that that's a big issue here in the Coon Rapids area as well. Dominion building some homes in other places. So with that, I'd just say this legislation year, it was a bipartisan effort to bring equity to people with disabilities and with seniors, actually, on the transparency side as well. So thank you, Mayor, for letting us come here and letting me send five minutes of your time. And thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Fifty-five minutes.
My wife said I'm not funny, don't try to be.
How are we going to fill the void?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for having me here today. I'm the new kid on the block, Zach Stevenson. I represent the western portions of Coon Rapids, so along the border with Anoka and the river. And I think John and Melissa gave you a pretty good snapshot of what happened this last session. I share their positive feelings about, you know, Minnesota was the only legislature in the country divided between Democrats and Republicans. And in this time of hyper-partisanship, I think is just really remarkable that here in Minnesota, we were able to work together and come to a compromise, a word that's almost been forgotten in our political discourse, and really set an example for the rest of the country. And I think that's something we can be really proud of. I want to take a moment and talk a little forward-looking about what is on your Coon Rapids delegation's mind as we look ahead into the next year, which as people who follow the legislature might know, you know, we had a budget year this year and next year is kind of thought of as being a bonding year. And there's a few bonding projects that are really very important to the city of Coon Rapids. And I think at the top of my list is getting a third lane on Highway 10 from the Hanson Interchange forward all the way to Round Lake. We actually worked really hard to try and get that done this year and made really substantial progress. We had a hearing on it out in Blaine, advanced through the committee process. And I think if we had had a bonding bill this year, we probably would have gotten it done, but we'll be back at it again next year. A related project in terms of highway infrastructure is completing the 610 interchange at East River Road and making it a full directional interchange, so you can go both directions there. That's really the capstone towards finishing that 610 project. Two other projects to highlight, one that I think this summer really spoke out to me is getting a pedestrian bridge at the intersection of Avicet and Coon Rapids Boulevard. That intersection is, you know, obviously very important to the city, increasingly so as we're hopeful to see some great new development there. Also is a place where we could see some great pedestrian trail opportunities connecting the trails at the dam all the way up to Bunker along Coon Creek. But of course, this summer, we actually had a traffic fatality, pedestrian fatality at that intersection. And that's before we had any of the great development that's occurring there. So it's going to be of increasing importance. The last project I would highlight for you is one I'm really excited about. You know, we have a great asset in our community, Anoka-Ramsey Community College, and they do a lot of really great things there, including they have just a phenomenal nursing program. And they want to expand that nursing program. And we're going to have a proposal this year to invest a lot of money in building out their nursing program. I think this is a really exciting opportunity for Coon Rapids as we continue to have sort of opportunities for cooperation between various medical-related sectors. You know, we have Mercy Hospital where Alina has made great investments. They also just opened, as you all know, a 500-person medical facility down in the southern part of Coon Rapids. And of course, we have Coon Rapids High School as the Center for Biomedical Engineering, as Councilmember Denver knows very well. So there's an opportunity here to really advance Coon Rapids by having different aspects of our city working together and investing into Anoka-Ramsey and pushing forward that nursing program is a great opportunity to move us forward. So all of those are projects that we're going to be working really hard to advance as we move through the bonding year this year, and I'm feeling optimistic. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Stevens.
Hi there. Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Aaron Cagle, I represent the other side of Coon Rapids on University Avenue all the way up to 242. So some of the Melissa and John and Zach all kind of touched on all this already, but some of the stuff that I've been working on, number one was the East River Road interchange, completing that. And there will be a stop on the bonding tour tomorrow, actually, at that interchange. So we'll get an opportunity to show the need for that area. Another issue that I've been working really hard on is the safety measures along University Avenue corridor. And we were able to secure some funding this year in the transportation bill to really take a look at that corridor along East River Road, Highway 65, and then University Avenue, where there's been a lot of pedestrian fatalities and crashes. And how that area is being used has changed a lot, especially with the transit station and people, more pedestrians there. And so also tomorrow on the bonding tour, we'll be doing a stop-up at the National Sports Center for the Regional Training Center, which Coon Rapids, I understand, could take advantage of that as well. But, you know, my major role for the city of Coon Rapids here is to listen to you guys and figure out, you know, what you need and what we can do to make that happen at the state level. So please feel free to give me a call or shoot me an email anytime you need anything.
Representative Cagle, just stay there a second.
Sure.
So before we...I'm sure we're going to have some questions for everyone, but Representative Cagle, on behalf of our 833-member cities, I want to thank you for your efforts this past legislative session and recognize you as a League of Minnesota Cities legislator of distinction for 2019. League staff and member city officials appreciate your accessibility and your consultation with us on legislative legislation impacting cities. Specifically, the League appreciates you authoring the interactive television bill for military personnel to participate in city council meetings remotely. Furthermore, you are consistently accessible to League staff and listen to city concerns. Our members know that in order to be successful in serving our common constituents, state and city officials must work together as partners to reach solutions that meet the unique needs of rural, suburban, and urban communities across Minnesota. City leaders also understand that without the support of legislative leaders like you, this state and local partnership would not be possible. We have a great working relationship with all of our legislators, but I had to call you out because the League of Minnesota Cities has called you out. So thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
So questions for the rest of them while they're still there? Would you field questions?
Happy to take questions.
Or could we just make a suggestion that you're starting to understand the frustration that we've had with DHS? Now, it seems like it's sort of percolating up in other areas, but we've been dealing with them for at least two years on a particular property, and we really need help with that. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Mayor Cook, and thank you. As you know, Jim Abler is also Coon Rapids, and so is Jerry Newton. Those two have also been in the middle of that conversation as well. And we're not going away on that conversation, Mayor. You have our support on that. And it's really been frustrating to get, you know, two sides. And what we need to look at, we have a hearing tomorrow. We have a Health and Human Services...this is the second hearing now in a month to address some of the transparency issues that are concerned there. We're going to stay on top of that. We promise you that because we're just as equally frustrated with that. And I think the governor appointing this new person from Medtronic and Lutheran Social Services is a fresh start, and you'll start to see some things happening. So we're excited about that, but stay tuned. We're here for you. So thank you. And those two say hi, by the way.
Can I also just say on that topic, I want to thank you, Mayor, and also Chief Wise, for your real strong advocacy for the city of Coon Rapids on that issue. You know, it came down to...we've had, as you know, but maybe other people watching don't, we had a lot of communications with the department and with other legislative leaders about trying to address that issue. And every time we asked for anything from the city, you guys were right there with us, standing with us and working with us. It makes such a huge difference, the advocacy you guys did around that issue at the Capitol. And I really appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you. We'd like to see a change out here now.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions or comments for our legislative group while they're here?
Thank you for your time.
You hit on the priorities.
I do have a quick follow-up question, and that is, Zach, you mentioned the bonding issues. Where do you think we stand in terms of our region on those four topics that you discussed? I mean, obviously, everybody wants a little slice of the pie. And obviously, there are some really good projects elsewhere as well, in other areas that you all represent. But in particular, I'm most interested in that interchange that you all mentioned, East River Road, but also the pedestrian bridge. And how do you guys think those fit in in terms of priorities?
I would point out that on 610, the region has had a long history of working together cooperatively to try and get that project completed. And now I'm very hopeful and very optimistic that those same communities that we were helping, you know, Maple Grove and Dayton and Brooklyn Park, get their stuff done, that they will be with us trying to get this last interchange done, and that we can continue the long history we have of working cooperatively on that. On the Anoka-Ramsey project, I know it ranks very highly on Minskew's list, so I think we actually have a very good opportunity there to pull in some regional support. And the thing I would say about the pedestrian bridges, it's in the Speaker of the House's district, is something I would like to point out, which is good. That's a good sign.
Thank you.
Excellent. All right. Thank you very much for coming in. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We are...okay, we are on item two, the approval of the minutes of the August 20, 2019 meeting.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Kicker.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the August 20, 2019 meeting.
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Demmer. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that...those minutes are approved. We have two items on our consent agenda this evening. The first one is actually item three on the agenda, and that's to approve final payment to Dave Perkins Contracting Incorporated for Project 18-7, Egrit Boulevard Water Main The change orders were for fixing a leaking water main valve noted during construction and adding another water main value to the...or valve to the system. This extra work extended the project completion date, and the actual project costs were less than the final contract amount due to less work performed than the actual bid. So we are looking at approving change orders and final payment to Dave Perkins Contracting Incorporated in the amount of $7,885.99 for Project 18-7, Egrit Boulevard Water Main Replacement. And then item four, which is the second and last item on our consent agenda, is to approve final payment to Dryden Excavating Incorporated for Project 18-18, Pleasure Creek Culvert Extension. And this was where the...we eliminated the pedestrian bridge down off Coon Rapids Boulevard, just west of Springbrook Drive, replaced it with culverts. So we're looking to approve the final payment to Dryden Excavating Incorporated in the amount of $21,251.55 for Project 18-18, Pleasure Creek Culvert Extension.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Kicker.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Demmer. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the consent agenda is adopted and approved. We are on item five, to consider resolutions ordering preparation of feasibility report and plans for Project 20-1, Street Reconstruction. Mr. Hanson's not here tonight. Mr. Hammer is. Is there anything you wanted to...2.6 miles of residential streets, and it's 16 different streets again. What happened to just, you know, we're going to do this street from here to here, you know?
It's a little more challenging, Mr. Mayor, when you're trying to piece these together in specific locations. And as we talked in work session before, we're kind of backing away a little bit, focusing a little more on the maintenance side of things. So 20-1 has some sidewalk enhancements. 97th Avenue has had some significant water main issues that need to be addressed. So this is primarily the residential areas, and I'm happy to stand for any questions. Really, this is just to prepare the feasibility report. We'll come back later with specific improvements, costs, assessments, those sort of things. So this is just to get us investigating and get you all the information related to the projects.
All right. Sounds good. Anybody have any questions of Mr. Hammer?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 20-1 Sub-3, ordering preparation of the feasibility report. And if Mr. Brody allows, I will add to the motion to adopt Resolution 20-1 Sub-6, ordering the preparation of plans.
I'll second that.
Motion by Geisler, second by Johnson. Discussion?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer.
So I had a constituent complain about those water main issues, and it was very timely because I was able to say, guess what? It's on the list for repair. So kudos to being just one step ahead of the complaints.
All right. Any other discussion? We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. And then item six, much of the same, consider resolutions ordering preparation of feasibility report and plans for Project 20-2, but these are the MSA Street Reconstruction. And this is 2.1 miles of municipal state aid streets and .2 miles of local streets. It includes Riverdale Drive from the west city limit to Northdale Boulevard, Northdale Boulevard from Riverdale Drive to Round Lake Boulevard, Crooked Lake Boulevard from Gladiola Street to approximately 500 feet north of Northdale, Crooked Lake Boulevard Service Road from 121st to 119th Avenue, and 113th Avenue from Coon Rapids Boulevard to Crooked Lake Boulevard. There are only five. I thought I could just read them then. Anything you need to add to that, Mr. Hammer?
No, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to answer any questions, but like I said before, this is just to let us dig in and tell you exactly what's going to happen on these roads when we come back in about a month and a half.
All right. Pretty good.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Kicker.
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 20-2 Sub-3, ordering preparations of feasibility report, and adopt Resolution Number 20-2 Sub-6, ordering preparations of plans.
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Geisler. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Item seven is to consider Resolution 19-85, to accept a 2019 grant for a full-time DWI officer. Chief Wise, is this a continuation of what we had before, or is this a new position? Or what?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, actually, you're remembering that a few years ago that we did have a grant-funded position that was totally focused on DWI enforcement or impaired driving enforcement. That grant ceased being funded for us in 2018. We reapplied for a 2019 grant, and we were awarded that grant. So it's funded through the state with national or federal dollars.
Okay. Thank you. I thought it was interesting last time. I thought you said you could only keep them in that role for about six months because it's such a high burnout. It's just such a tough task.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, actually, that's absolutely right, is that we do change the officer from time to time. And yes, staying focused and working hard on the roads to get impaired drivers off the road is tedious. There's a lot of paperwork involved with it, too, but we want to make sure that we have motivated staff because in the end, the state expects any agency to produce, and it's why we won the grant back. Frankly, other...some other agency that was awarded the grant in 2018 apparently didn't cut it. And when Coon Rapids applied, they were very agreeable to award us the grant again, and that's because of the good work of our officers here.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Anybody have any questions of Chief Wise? All right.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer.
That serves as a great reminder for everyone to, you know, call for a ride because we have officers out there, and the state's decided that we're one of the ones worth giving more funding to, so.
Don't call the police for a ride.
Well, call somebody for a ride. I didn't want to bring up a specific company.
I thought, I don't think we're funding that, too.
No. Call for a ride. Don't get in trouble.
Yeah. Councilmember Demmer, my favorite one, the story that I like to hear most is that it's become a thing for people to call tow companies. So the tow truck comes to the bar, toes the car, and then takes the person who maybe had too much to drink home. And it's an inexpensive way to get both your car and you safely home. I like it, though. People can consider that.
I never considered tow trucks inexpensive.
Yeah. Well, comparatively.
Compared to the alternative.
Compared to...
And if you want your car there the next day to go to work.
Yeah, that's the key. Otherwise, you're sobered.
All right. Well, I will move approval of Resolution 19-85, authorizing 2019 agreement with the Minnesota Office of Traffic Safety and accepting a grant to fund a full-time officer through September 30, 2020.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Johnson. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Item eight is to consider Resolution 19-86, adopting the preliminary 2020 tax levy. A preliminary tax levy must be certified to the county by September 30, 2019 to compute parcel-specific notices. We had a workshop on August 13 to review the proposed 2020 budget.[1751.71] The proposed city tax levy is twenty-nine million five hundred forty-two thousand three hundred thirty dollars. And this levy can be reduced, if we, assuming we adopt it tonight, this levy can be reduced before final certification in December, but cannot be increased. Mr. Stemmle, or, or anybody getting, any of that, or?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, the proposed tax levy, um, will be approximately four point six-three percent increase over last year. Um, and our net tax capacity, um, rate actually went down from forty-one point two-three-one to forty point two-six-one, um, for this tax year. Uh, we will have the Truth in Taxation meeting before that final certification in December. And at that time, we will, um, we will explain more about what the, what, what's all in the levy and, and have a hearing on that.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Oh, Mr. Stemmle?
Mayor, Council, I'll just make additional note that if folks are interested in getting detail on what's included in the city budget, uh, the entire proposed budget is available on the city's website under the finance page. So if you go to, uh, that, look under government departments, you'll find the finance department, and you can find the proposed budget. We'll also be producing, uh, kind of a citizens' budget and brief that'll accompany that budget. Um, as well as, as Fran mentioned, we do a presentation to the public at the taxation hearing at the first meeting in December. So, a couple of places people can go. There also will be a, a brief snippet about the budget in, uh, this newsletter that'll come out to homes this week for the fall. Um, there's, it's not a comprehensive information. We really suggest you go to the website for that.
Mr. Stemmle, what do you think that, uh, that snapshot that you're talking about would be available, or that summary? Because, because rather than send somebody in there to read that two hundred and sixty, I don't remember how many pages it is. There's that summary, and when will that, when can they expect that to be out?
Yep, uh, we, we have a draft version of that that was completed for council purposes a few weeks ago in the council work session. We'll work on modifying that, especially now that the newsletter is out. Um, so I'd expect in the next several weeks, we could have something like that available for public consumption.
Okay, thank you.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson?
I'll move to adopt Resolution nineteen dash eighty-six, establishing the preliminary tax levy for the city of Coon Rapids as stated in the agenda. Eager to get that levy set.
I, I thought he was done. Motion by Johnson, second by Kicker. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Boy, it's all of those months of work and all that time you've got into this, and then it's just, just like that.
Few more steps, but yes.
Yep.
It's sort of anticlimactic.
Yep, there you go. All right, uh, we are at the open mic, public comment portion of the meeting. Is anybody here to, to address counsel on open mic? No, we have, and we have one report on a previous open mic item, and that's, Mr. Brian Vale of one thirty-one sixteen Crooked Lake Boulevard appeared at the open mic portion of the August twentieth meeting. Um, he addressed counsel to express his concerns related to the fishing pier at Crooked Lake, specifically the proximity to his property and associated concerns that accompany the use of the pier. He further questioned a pile of concrete debris near a recently completed dumpster pad located approximately fifteen feet from his property line. Uh, staff was previously contacted by Mr. Vale on a few occasions during the park redevelopment project, uh, expressing his concerns related to bad language, public intoxication, excessive trash, and jumping slash swimming from the pier. Conversations escalated in the fall of two thousand eighteen when the installation of a second pier was being considered. Counsel may recall that the original plans for the Crooked Lake Park Development, redevelopment included the removal of the existing pier and installation of a new one approximately seventy-five feet north of the previously existing location due to high usage and demand for such facility. Staff received sever, staff received several inquiries for inclusion of a second pier instead of the replacement. Uh, staff spoke with the city council at the time and contacted the DNR to determine if it would be feasible. The DNR determined the fishing pier improvement on Crooked Lake was a high priority under their public water access program with limited public fishing access available in the area. Both parties recognized the opportunity and developed a partnership to reaffurbish and install, uh, reinstall the existing pier. Let's see here, so let's just skip ahead. Staff has reviewed the situation in the field, taken measurements, and contacted the DNR to discuss potential solutions. The distance from the north end of the north pier to the swimming area is approximately a hundred feet. From the south end of the north pier to the north end of the south pier is approximately a hundred and seventy-five feet, just in case anybody's taking notes at home. And from the south end of the south pier to the Vale Dock is approximately a hundred and five feet. Um, we've got about four potential options laid out to start with. Uh, don't complete the installation of the second pier. Uh, reconfigure and/or reposition the pier to create additional separation from the property line. Swap the locations of the pier in the swimming area, or do nothing. Install the piers was decided in September of two thousand eighteen. Um, obviously, I truncated several of those where they went into great descriptions, but we've already it outside of here's. Counsel, have any thing they want to talk about on this, or do we want to schedule something on this? Or do we want to? Any thoughts? Okay. Councilmember.
The one thing I would like to say, and it was in the, was in the staff report, is that I definitely want to see, like, it kept ADA down there. I mean, there's, uh, grandkids with grandparents that go down there and utilize that fishing pier. I've seen that. I just think it's, uh, very important that it's kept ADA compliant, as was originally intended in one manner or another. Thank you.
I agree.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson?
I understand the recommendation, and staff's recommendation is to reinstall the second pier as originally planned. I, I do think, though, that the gentleman who came before us made some excellent points. And, um, and I do think it's, it's worthy of ongoing consideration as to whether there are ways we can maintain the integrity of the ADA access for that pier. I think that's pivotal for us to keep that. But if we can do as we kind of discussed at the last meeting, look at options to just orient it in a slightly different way, or to deal with the way that the jog goes on the dock or pier itself to create a little bit of distance. I frankly think that the city should have thought about kind of the orientation of that as a part of its planning and being a good kind of neighbor. Um, because I'm, I'm empathetic to the issues that he raised, um, and I think they were legitimate issues. Um, but I understand staff's recommendation, and we're not asked to take any action on it here tonight. So, thank you.
Mr. Hammer, is there any chance you could just kind of give us a snapshot between, in, in the future of, you said there are possible options for other configurations that would require additional time, materials, costs, and likely permitting? But it would be interesting to know if there was something that we could do to even, even if we, in, instead of moving that whole T over and creating an L, if we could even just short, shorten that T or something. Uh, is there some other configuration that we might be able to consider? Because it seems like for just a little, if it's a little bit of expense, that maybe we should, we should, we should consider that.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, as, as I mentioned in, in the memo, that if you start to go into the L configuration, you got these long segments. And as the ice starts to push out, we're gonna be repairing and fixing that on an annual basis. Um, you know, one option to consider, and it would probably save about twenty feet on either end, is just in, instead of the big T, maybe taking ten feet off of either side and just tightening it up. Now, that's gonna eliminate a lot of space. You're, you're gonna take away some opportunity there. But you can kind of condense that T maybe into just a lowercase i.
You know, and, and I think what we would, I mean, we've got the second fishing pier there. So if we, if we lessen this one a little bit, you know, and then maybe put a sign up on the other one that says fishing only instead of it becoming this swimming pier is what it appears to be getting used as, you know, maybe we can get by with a little less out there, but still have the ADA compliance and still have plenty of room.
Even a sign on the second pier that indicated handicapped accessible, almost like you'd see a handicap accessible booth at a restaurant where you keep those free. It might, you know, reduce use by others, other, other folks. I was out there one night, uh, last week, late in the evening, and I was surprised to see one of our city staff out there, uh, late in the evening, making sure there was no trash. So I know we are addressing it. The trash can was there. It was clean. It was all picked up. So I know we're doing what we can to address the residents' concern.
And when it comes to, to using it as a swimming pier, I mean, that's, that's not what it's there for. There's signage already related to what it is. You know, we've, we've had several conversations with Mr. Vale about making the appropriate phone calls, and, and then it just becomes an enforcement issue, which isn't always, uh, pleasant or, or timely in that by the time you get there, they're potentially gone and, and some other things. To Councilmember Johnson's point, we, we, we looked at the frontage we had, uh, on this. And absent going further to the north and removing more trees and adding more hardscape, um, this is the best configuration. Cause if we start really moving that into an L shape, now you're gonna start putting those two piers closer together, and you're gonna end up with, uh, people tangling their lines, trying to fish back and forth across each other. So, uh, we did our best to try to center that one, uh, in the middle between the beach and give some opportunity, um, to respect that property line. You know, there is opportunity within that property as well to move their dock a little bit, one way or the other, as they reinstall it. I know it's not perfect, um, but absent moving these piers one way or another, we're, we're not gonna meet ADA, and the condition of approval for the DNR grant to provide the materials to fix it is that it is ADA accessible.
Sure. Thank you. Any other business to come before council this evening? Mr. Hammer?
Mr. Mayor, I just, I'm just looking for clarification, because as the memo states, that, that pier is just about done. I mean, we've got a couple of final pieces to put on, and we want to get that in the water. So I'm proceeding as it's going in the same way it was when we took it out when this project started. Absent any direction from you, that's likely gonna happen in the next two to three weeks.
Can't just move to other business? Council, have any, uh, strong convictions, one way or the other here, or otherwise it's just gonna go back in the way it was?
My, my question to you, Mr. Hammer, is it, I understand creating the access for the ADA compliance, and I'm not suggesting that we alter that in any way. My, what I heard you saying, and please correct me if I'm, I'm wrong or misinterpreting this, is that you don't want to change the access point where people are entering onto the pier because of the way that we agreed to do it and the commitments that we have to make it ADA compliant. And I get that, because there's a pathway that goes down there and the like. Once it gets out into the lake, however, though, as you go down it, is there the ability? When it gets to the end, as I understand it, it's gonna be a T at the end?
Correct.
Is there the ability to make it an L and just move it, move that N section over so that it may put you ten or twenty feet closer to the other pier, but it puts you ten or twenty feet farther away from the property line?
Under the current design that we have, the current configuration we have, we, we can't just turn that into an L.
Okay.
It doesn't, it doesn't function that way. We would have to wait, send back some of those pieces, and get the correct configuration.
Okay, so it's not segmented like my dock, you know, is segmented on, on my property where I can literally unbolt the end of it and move it over and reconfigure it? That's not how this pier works.
You can certainly bolt it and re-bolt it into the different configurations, but the way it's designed to, to withstand that loading, that's not gonna work. We'd have to find some different brackets. We'd have to do some other things. Um, and, and even doing that, it, what I've been told is it becomes a maintenance nightmare.
All right.
And we can't cheat it just a little bit? Like when it's, where it's connected, we can't just cheat the angle a little bit? Kind of angle the whole thing a little bit?
I guess my question there is, are these permanent pylons that are going in on this, they'll be full year round?
No, these are floating sections. So the, 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 the permanent piece that it sits on, on the shore, is a concrete pad.
Yep.
So if we want to change the angle, we need to take out the concrete pad and pour a new concrete pad that has it at that angle. But then again, you're not putting that T out into, you know, at that ninety-degree angle to the lake. So as that gets the pushing and pulling from the ice, you're starting to, you're starting to tweak the angle by which that ice is gonna come out. So it's not gonna hit the end of that T.
I got you.
And kind of buffer it a little bit. It's gonna be at an angle, and it's gonna start to push that dock in. And you're gonna start pulling it off of that footing every year.
So, I, I mean, that, that actually helps inform my thoughts on, on this a little bit. I, I would like to see us at some point in time, maybe it's before next spring, have a conversation, um, about this further. But I think as we're coming into winter, my instinct is to recommend that we put it in as planned because it's planned to withstand the Minnesota winter and what happens on that lake. And then we can continue to evaluate the, the situation as we go forward. That's my instinct.
Mayor?
Councilmember Griscovia?
Mr. Hammer? The, 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 the side wings of the T, about how wide are they right now? Are they twenty feet each side? And could you make them ten feet each side and leave the same current configuration, but have a lesser width on each side?
Yeah, Councilmember Griscovia, that's so we could just pull out a section. So instead of having, say, forty feet across the end, we could reduce that to twenty.
And would that keep us ADA and in compliance with the DNR and accommodate the ice-out condition?
Yeah, the, the ADA compliance is really just the steepness of the slope and the ability to get down there and have a place to park in close proximity. Uh, but once you're on the pier itself, um, everything would still remain. We would just be shortening the lengths of those Ts. And it sounds like that can be done under this current configuration, is just removing some sections on the end and just condensing that, that T, maybe a lowercase t.
Question that you raise, and my only follow-up just briefly on that is, if we were to go that way, could we then later decide to add those extra links back on? Is it feasible to do that down the road?
Sounds like it is, and I'll certainly confirm that. But if, if that's the direction, we can certainly try to remove some sections and condense that.
Wouldn't, I mean, wouldn't we want to just remove the one section, though, on the side that's towards the, you know, the residence? So it's, you know, ten feet on that side, but we still have the twenty feet on the other? I mean, it's, if, if that's not gonna affect the configuration or the, you know, the stability of it?
I can certainly check into that. It, I'm guessing you're gonna want some symmetry with that. But i- if it's feasible, we can certainly go that route. Otherwise, it sounds like I'm just gonna try to make it a lowercase t instead of a capital T.
Councilmember Geisler?
I guess for me, we've got a plan. We've been working on it. It is September. I would recommend, let's put it in as designed, as planned. And we've got a couple of months here where people would, would be fishing. And then look at studying it and figuring out, is this gonna work? Do we have any issues? And then look to potentially reconfigure in the spring if we have issues with it. Cause right now, we're, there's the thought that we might have issues. And since we already have the plan, I'd say let's put it in and see if we actually do have issues before we try and make the different reconfigurations. And then that gives us time to study what those possible options are, um, over the winter that we could look at changing it in the spring if we need to.
Mr. Hammer, if we put it in the way that it's set up right now, will you be putting it right back where it was before, correct?
Yeah, it goes right back to where it's been for twenty-five years.
Okay, so I don't see any reason why there wouldn't continue to be issues since we've had issues there. That's, I, I, I like the suggestion, and frankly, I have no trouble with symmetry. On a dock, if it's shorter on one side than the other side, it's a dock, you know? If it's, if it's still gonna resist the ice movement or whatever it is that you're supposed to do, I mean, I'm okay with, with it being not symmetrical.
I would assume it's a structural risk if it's not symmetrical, that as the ice pushes on it, it's gonna. But that's the engineer's decision. The, the one question I had is if, if there's any way just changes in lighting, changes in trimming of trees that give people sightlines from, you know, are there ways to just cut down on hooliganism other than changing the dock? That might be directed at Chief Wise now that I think about it.
Drones. We have our evening staff there. We get, we get work on the weekends. You get more activity there with the shelters. I mean, that, that's your best deterrent is the more activity that's there. But expecting that you're gonna get none, uh, we did put a light down below. Um, it certainly doesn't light everything that's there. But, um, I don't think there's anything in a design that we could do.
Yeah, I, I just think that, you know, some of those quick little solar lights have gotten so cheap that it's, if they're at all useful for deterring things, it's a twenty-dollar solution, so.
It's government. Nothing is twenty dollars.
It's a hundred-dollar solution.
I, I guess, you know, for me, I'm, I don't know where or why, if there were issues with that existing pier and the existing configuration, why did we plan to put it back in the exact same spot with the exact same configuration? So to me, when that wasn't, it was always brought up that, hey, we want the second pier. We want the additional space. We want all of this additional. And I don't recall hearing anything about big issues then. So if there had, were all. So, if there were all these kinds of issues, why wasn't it brought up when we were making the decision to put that pier back in, in the same spot, in the same configuration? That's why I think it makes sense to just put it back where we planned and see if there truly are some different issues when we've got the swimming beach and the second pier. If other things manifest, then we can address it.
I've been here for seven years, council member Geisler, and that's the first I had heard any concerns related to this pier. Mr. Vale moved in there in October of 2018, so about that time he was moving in, this project was starting to advance, so I think the difference is you have a different resident. I, I don't know, I haven't heard anything from any past residents, but again, it's, it's a seven-year history for me, and that's the first it had come to my attention related to the pier.
So, will we, will we need a motion on this, or are you looking for, for some sort of, you know, that other word?
I'm just looking for some direction.
Consensus, thank you. I thought, not consent.
Here, council, I may offer too, that if there's, you know, additional need for us to look into some options, we will have a work session next week, not necessarily that this would be a standalone topic, but under other business, if there was new information or council had some other thoughts about, about that, you know, we're about a week away from that, that's probably still works within the timeline, it's just, I think this fall, the plan had been, and we've even had some folks in the, in the public inquire about the ADA accessible pier, and so we're trying to be sort of reasonable in that timeframe too, that a request has been made. So, we're trying to move it forward, you know, I think we're probably close to a resolution, and so if you need the ability to have one more week to kind of ponder that, I think that's an option.
I, I, yeah, I can go either way. I would support it shortening a little bit and putting it in this with a little bit narrower, but I don't know if that's, how many we have on that?
I feel the same way. I mean, if we can do it, we know that there's been issues. I mean, Mr. Vale made that abundantly clear, so.
Realistically, if we say we're going to check again next year to see if there's any issues, we will have reported issues next year. I mean, we'll have exactly the same volume of issues as we have right now reported, right? I mean, that's, right, so that's what I'm saying. So, would, would we take action on one next year at this time?
I don't know.
The evening in the park, there were, there was more than Mr. Vale, it was him, and it was a neighbor on the other side of him yet also, talking about the incidents.
And I, I've seen.
But that's different than the placement of the pier and the shape of the pier.
I'm, I'm totally fine with making it narrower unless somebody thinks that there's going to be so many fishermen that they're going to be hooking each other, and that's why it's so wide. My guess is it's that wide because that's how wide they are, that you ordered it that wide, because that's a kit, and that it wasn't scientifically decided that that was the optimal width of the kit for the number of fisher people we're going to have. It seems like it's probably guesswork whether it's narrower or wider, and if it's a little bit farther off the lot line, whatever. If you start getting complaints that there's too many people fishing on it and they're hooking each other, then make it wider again.
Okay. All right. I'm only hearing, I'm only hearing one that's advocating for putting it in the way it is. So, do with that what you want.
Well, we'll confirm some of the design pieces, and then if there's any need for update, we'll continue to update council on that, so.
Okay, all right. Mr. Hammer? We'd like to go to other business, is that okay?
Feel free, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Other business, what do we have for the council here?
So, do we want to go back to Mr. Hammer and ask about the Foley Boulevard closure to make sure everybody, everybody knows about that?
Well, I'm sure everybody knows about that.
Everybody in fact that knows by now.
I will say, the good news is, is that I didn't receive any calls about that today, because the phone was lit up over some other issues that, you know, came through last night. I'm sure most people noticed that. So, nothing on the Foley closure report, other than we got about three weeks ahead of us. I haven't heard from the transportation district at the school, how that went for them. I'm sure there'll be some growing pains for a little while, but yes, it's not optimal timing, but we had to get what we had to get, and this was the first opportunity was available, so.
Mr. Hammer, is there, what kind of signage do we have there? I drove that, I thought it was just the sign that said, road closed to through traffic, and oftentimes, that doesn't necessarily mean road closed. It means, you know, that there's a narrow area you can get through, but that's not the case. Everybody that got there had to turn around.
Council member Kicker, I'll certainly review that, but typically what they say is road closed to through traffic, local, local traffic. I'm not saying that's what it says, I haven't really reviewed that.
That's what I thought it said.
But yes, when, when you know it's closed to through traffic, that's, that's pretty clear. Most people go, no, it's not, I'll find out for myself, and then they want to wind through the neighborhoods thinking they got a shortcut. There's a very long creek there, and there ain't really too many ways around it other than going over to Hanson or going over to University Avenue.
You had to turn around. There's no way to get through.
It's a hard closure between roughly one hundred and eighteenth, one hundred and nineteenth, somewhere in there, but other than that, there's plenty of access for the residents, the neighborhoods. We've got fog ceiling going on up in that neighborhood, so we'll have, have access in and out of there for our activities. But yes, it is at the creek, there is no way through.
Right, right, I know that.
You didn't try that Dukes of Hazzard thing, did you?
No, there was no ramp.
He says, I know that.
Council member Demmer?
Yeah, so, two things, number one, there were a lot of trees down, and I was, you know, while I was woken up by the sound of chainsaws, I sure appreciated it when I was able to, you know, get out and get the kids dropped off and get to work, so just another thanks to the people who are out there at really early hours in the morning, making life better for the rest of us. And on the second note, with dropping the kids off at school, everybody, you know, welcome to a new school year, teachers, parents, kids, you know, everyone drive a little more carefully, not that you are driving not carefully, but drive a little more carefully. There's a lot of changes to the districts, some of the bus routes are a little confusing for the first week, and not everyone knows exactly where they're supposed to be, so good luck in the new year to everybody, and everyone is not affected, just be a little, little careful for a while as everyone figures out their place.
On the, the road construction, I noticed last week that the county now says Hanson will be open in November, so there's no more talk of October, now it will be open in November. Do we know beginning or end, or just, it's a county project, I get it.
News to be, Mr. Mayor, I was still under the impression we're talking the end of October. I mean, Halloween was always the date for me.
Okay.
So, I, the bridge will get open, there's still some ancillary work that's going to have to happen around that. So, those updates come on a weekly basis, there's weekly site meetings on what's there, maybe something changed in the last week, but I wasn't aware we're talking significant longer delay.
You should watch the Friday CTN updates. That's where it was. All right.
Mayor?
Counsel member Kreskowiak?
Regarding county roads, Main Street is a county road, and I was wondering how the city might facilitate a conversation with the county in looking at one of the flashing yellow turn arrows eastbound on Main Street at Shenandoah. I've seen those flashing yellows work pretty effectively in other parts of the city, and not even, not only our city, but across the metro, and I was just, I would like to see a conversation started with the county and possibly making that happen. I'm not sure if those sensors have to go in with new road construction or how that works, but.
Yeah, I've, I've asked them several times on some of those, and they're like, yeah, it's not on our plan, and if you want to pay for it, so it's significant dollars from a city perspective. So, we, we would have to look at it budget-wise and probably prioritize if there's other places in the city, and, because they do work, and they are a really nice addition.
Right.
And the county has a, a list, and they take, I think they're trying to do five or ten intersections a year based on cost and priority, and so part of our thing is when I call, I just try and get our priority moved up on the list.
I know some of them might have the capacity, but they're only flashing at certain times too, they only flash outside of rush hour, so I wonder if maybe some were installed and maybe have the capacity, I don't know, but, okay. Interesting question for the county.
Well, over time, as the designs evolve, so this would have been done pre-flashing yellow. They do have to be set up that way, and then it's all just the timing, so it's just changing out some circuitry for the signal itself.
Mr. Anderson, how are things going at the golf course?
Mayor, thanks for asking. September is always a fantastic month at Bunker Hills. Usually, our best course conditions in this year is very much, that's very much the case. The course is fantastic, thanks to a lot of hard work by our turf grass maintenance division, they've done a great job this year getting the golf course in condition. For great play in September, despite road closures, people have been making their way up, big crowds, which is wonderful. So, we just need good weather now, right? So, if you remember last year, the second half of November, we had horrible weather, and October wasn't much better, so if we have good weather in September and October, we hope to have a very long and fantastic fall golf season, and keep our outdoor eateries open and everything would be a wonderful thing for us, so pray for good weather as always to keep us going as long as possible.
Excellent, thank you.
Mr. Gray?
Counsel member Geisler?
I do have one other thing, so not this Saturday, the seventh, but next week, Saturday, the fourteenth, is the movie in the park for Mary Poppins Returns, so if people want to go see the movie in the park, come out to the park, make sure I've got the right park, Sand Creek, and so hopefully it will be a nice night and get everybody out and see Mary Poppins Returns.
And the pet fair will be after our next council meeting?
Correct.
It's like the twenty-first or something? Yeah.
And then I think Chief Piper had his hand up.
Chief Piper?
Mayor, council, just a reminder that a week from tomorrow will be the anniversary of nine eleven, where two thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven innocent Americans were killed, and we shall never forget that data, of course, in, in our history. In the past, police, fire, veterans, active military, and citizens have been out on the Main Street Bridge over Highway Ten, and I am not part of the planning of that, but I would expect that we will be out there like we have in the past, and like I say, a week from tomorrow, we shall never forget.
Will you let us know if you hear you're not going to be out there, because we're expecting it too.
Will do. All right, and then I forgot to bring it this evening, but we had a great welcome home committee, welcome home celebration for the crawl, Coon Rapids and over Little League, had a great day out there, and, and I have a baseball to present that I forgot to bring tonight that is signed by all the players and the coaches on that team, so I will bring it next time. All right, other business?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by kicker, second by Demmer to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.